All right, welcome to the August 14th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. If you'll bow with me, we'll do the prayer and the pledge. Father God, we come to you today. We ask for guidance. We ask for wisdom. Lord, I thank you for the people who are in this room, for the prayers that are spoken and not spoken. Lord, lift up a special prayer for the Maxwell family and the passing of Austin's mom, that you'll be with them, that you'll comfort them, that you'll give them strength to be able to carry through and do the things that they need to do over the next many days. Lord, we pray for Austin and Claire, that you just be with them both. Lord, we love you and we praise you. Amen.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Tucker, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
There was someone who was gonna be signed up to come and wish you a happy birthday today, but they didn't show up.
Glad.
Yeah, so happy birthday, Erin.
Thank you.
All right. You have, excuse me, city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Second. Birthday, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Chad, is it your birthday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Who's birthday is it?
Erin's. Erin's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. We didn't sing your happy birthday.
(inaudible).
Other business.
All right, let's move to Hanger Site Development Contract Award.
On July 23rd, we received five bids, and Hensley Civil LLC was the apparent low bidder. Barge reviewed the bids and has provided a recommendation to approve the Hensley Civil LLC for this project. The bid was $1,180,000, and this includes the 5% city contingency funding of this project through the transfer of general fund to the airport fund. And as you recall, this work has to do with installing the storm water, extending utilities, and creating some elevations for pads, ramps, and taxiways for future development. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to take it at this time.
Chad, where is this group at? Where are they based?
I think they're in Murfreesboro area, I believe. Right? Yes. People from Building and Codes are shaking their head yes.
No for the Crown, and I move for approval.
Why is there hesitance? Is there something wrong with it? People that has been recommended, I'm not in the... I didn't come to the party. Is it anything?
Motion to defer.
Yeah, I missed this. I should've.
Yeah, I should've too, I'm sorry. I'm gonna make a motion to defer.
And why are we defer? I'm just, I don't know these people from...
I just, we probably want to do some more research. I think that's... I missed this on the agenda. My apologies. I would've done more research before we give out such a hefty contract for such an important job, so.
How many bids did we get?
We got five. This was the apparent low bidder, and I can't remember what the second one, if it was close. I think it was in the 1.4 on the second bid.
Was the low bidder that was selected, selected because they were the low bidder, or were they actually the best contractors to do the job?
This was just a bid process, so they were the low bid. Barge reviewed and did a reference check and got affirmative on that.
They used the bidder's address as 418 East Vine Street, but are they... Is that where Barge Designs is?
No, that's where Hensley's quarters is. I believe their offices.
Is that a second?
Sure.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Are we gonna call a meeting and discuss this, or how are we gonna do it?
Well, I guess we'll just all do our individual research like we would on any other item, and...
We're meeting next Thursday as well, so we can get more information for...
I apologize. I missed this. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, or not wrong with it, but I missed this. All right, let's move to...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. So we are gonna get something on all the...
Meeting next agenda. Next agenda.
Can we get it before then? Because the next agenda would be a day before the council meeting, won't it? Two days? Will we have time to research it? I mean, I won't have time to research it that fast.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for individual council members to talk to Chad and talk to Darren before the meeting on Thursday, and maybe if there's some additional questions to be asked. And the question I have is just, I think it would be good to see if this contractor has done city work before and is familiar with the bonding processes and all those things that will have to be done on a city project. So I think that would be beneficial. That's my question, but I think there may be some other questions that council members would have to be able to talk about.
When we put out the bid, were we specific on, you know, questions like what Shane just asked? Did they meet all the qualifications?
They're given the full documentation regarding bid process, bonding, all that is all very clear to them, and it's a pretty uniform project. And here's the purchasing director to describe that further for you.
They were vetted by Barge, and we have already received their bid bond and requested their payment performance bonds, and they're working on that. And today was a notice of award, but the contract has been reviewed by legal, is in the process. So they had been vetted. I'm not sure if there's other questions on that. But I'm happy to provide all of the bids to you if they'll help.
I would like that. Thank you. And again, I'm happy to do some research over the next week, and we'll see it on next week's agenda. Thank you. Next item, I guess?
Let's move to airport furniture contract.
All right. This is an approval for a CIP reallocation request, and then the furniture contract. This is for the new terminal event and meeting space where the MTSU classroom was, with their lease came to term. We've, they've removed all of their equipment and items in there, and now we're preparing that for meeting and training space. Using our Murfreesboro Service Agreement, NOI has provided us a quote for desks and chairs to accommodate up to 70 people in that training facility. The cost is $57,011.22. The purchase will be funded through a CIP reallocation and then transfer of funds, so I think we need to vote on the reallocation first.
No, it can just be one vote.
Just one vote on that. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer that at this time.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, let's move to airport audiovisual equipment contract.
So in that room now, we'll put up some monitors and microphones and other equipment in there so that we can facilitate various meetings with Zoom teams, all that. It'll be very similar to this room, but just won't be as technical as this one is. Through, again, our Murfreesboro Service Agreement, LandLink has provided us a quote. That cost for that equipment is $58,843. Again, this funding of this project will be through the CIP reallocation fund, transfer of funds. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to take it at this time.
If no comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, let's move to... Thank you, Chad. Let's move to True North Geographic Technologies LLC, updated master service agreement and work order. Ms. Green.
I'm the mayor and council. It's nice to stand before you today. What we are bringing to you today is a proposal to accept an updated and amended master service agreement with True North Geographic Technologies LLC. In 2019, the city council and city of Murfreesboro entered into an original MSA with True North, and since that time, our relationship with them has evolved, and our staff is recommending that we update that MSA and continue working under the new MSA. Some of the things that have changed since the original agreement is that we have changed software from OnBase as our plans review technology to DigiPlan. We've also changed the way that we bill. Rather than going through pass-through billing with True North, we entered into agreements directly with the providers, and so that's been a significant change. We also have a work order one to company the proposed MSA that you have in your agenda packet, and the work order one is specific to the workflows that we would like you to consider approving. We have a relationship with True North that has remained a key partner with the integration of these new workflows, and I'll go ahead and pull up a slide for you. It's not the one. When we think of the life cycle of a case that is called City Works or workflow, it starts with documenting the workflow, and that is where we prepare visio diagrams to show where the plans go in the process. Then it moves to what we call a sandbox, which is a test environment, and so we put those cases in the test environment and staff test to make sure that the capabilities are there, and then the final deployment is in production. Currently, we have 26 workflows that the city started working with True North to implement several years ago with that original work order. Of those 26 workflows, five are in production, and 21 remained in test. And you can see them listed under the brown box on the screen before you. You don't have to read them. They're also in your packet as well, but just for example, or not the brown box, I'm sorry, and the green box, the middle one, all the signed permits are in test. And then as far as the planning department, there's a pre-application meeting, a due diligence meeting, home-based business, zoning verification letters, and site plan. And due to some limitations of the software that we had before, the OnBase and the previous version of City Works, our consultant wasn't able to get the payment functionality to work and plans review to work effectively, so we have eliminated those as concerns with the move to OnBase and upgrading our City Works environment, so those are no longer concerns. And what we'd like for city council to do is approve funding to continue working on the 21 workflows that are in test, and then make any tweaks that we need to the five that are in production, so that we can move forward with those. In addition to those listed in, under the green box, we'd like for there to be 28 additional workflows or cases approved, and of those 28 workflows, 25 are for the issuance of permits. So you can see they're for new houses, additions, remodels, commercial permits, site work permits, land disturbance permits. We also have mobile food service, which is a food truck, temporary sales, beer permits, burn permits, a part of what we would like to begin working. With the planning department, we also have proposed preliminary plat review, which includes master plan, construction plans review, and final plat review. So altogether, there are 54 cases, which are workflows, that we would like to enter an agreement with work order one to get implemented, and our goal is to have those in the system as quickly as possible. We've gotten a commitment from True North to dedicate time and resources to the city of Murfreesboro to get the significant number of workflows into the system, and you can see that in work order one. There's some proposed schedules and timelines and phasing that we hope will help accelerate this process. It does have an aggressive movement, and so we're really looking forward to getting this to our community and to our staff members to help improve their process. And then in the last box, which again may be hard to review, you can see that there are seven cases that are in test. I think I said five before, because I'm used to saying five, but just this week, we added two additional cases in production. So public inquiry, zoning enforcement, notice of violation, sign confiscation, and code enforcement have been in production for quite some time, but just this week, the city has been able to put commercial plans review and multiple dwelling unit plans review in production, and that's the plans review that is conducted by our building codes department. If you will entertain me, I'd like to show that to you so you can see what it looks like. This is just an example of workflows, which I don't think you're as interested in. Mr. Jones is here this afternoon. If you have any questions about the process that I'm not able to answer, but I would like to show you what we've launched this week. So the city of Murfreesboro's website, under the building and codes department, you see they're still using blueprints to issue their permits. The idea is that when we go live with all these workflows, we'll be able to use City Works for permits and plans review, but there's a new tab on this page, if you're astute and pay attention, that says Murfreesboro Plan Submital, or you can find it under multi-dwelling unit permits or townhouses. And so we took the process, that's commercial plans review, and divided it basically into residential and commercial. Commercial is apartments, because they're commercial construction and all commercial development, and multiple dwelling units is townhomes, duplexes, and so if you were to go on our website right now, you could click on Murfreesboro Plan Submital, and it would take you to a page where you could create an account in City Works. So I logged on. I've got two accounts, one as if I'm the general public, and of course, one is a staff member, and I've logged on to the accounts here, and I can see these tabs that are custom-created for us, any cases that I have closed, any permits that have been issued, approved, anything that's been submitted, incomplete applications, and all applications. So what I have listed under all applications, as a staff member, looks a little bit different than, say, you were a homeowner, you would be able to find all your building permit application, or home builder, you'd be able to find all your building permit applications, but this will also be a repository for historical data, so you will be able to look in the past at the permits that you've requested, or the plans review that you've requested from the city of Murfreesboro through this site. The page I have up now is what staff members see, and so this is when you log on, and anybody who's involved in the commercial plans review will see this. There are dashboards, and just this week, Mr. Jones has started putting the commercial plans into the system and doing what we've kind of termed a soft launch, so making sure that staff is familiar with it. You haven't seen a lot of PR about it, because we want to make sure that everything is working as we expect it, and that our staff get used to participating in this new process. We have Murfreesboro Water that participates in it, CUD, Middleton C Electric, Planning, Engineering, Transportation Codes, all have access to this and are able to review the status of the cases, so you can see what cases have been accepted and reviewed or started. If I were to open a case, and I'll open Domenico's, news flash, we're getting a second Domenico's, which is really great for Murfreesboro.
Oh, wow! That's great.
We can see all the data associated with that case, so when they create it in the public portal, staff can go here and see information on the... Because this is a very GIS-centric software, so we have the layers that we believe are relevant in GIS. We have where it is in the workflow, and so based on these steps, the applicant will see that it's completed preliminary review, that it's under building codes review. Planning department here will need to, after they review the plans, go in and say proceed, revise, not needed, and that information will be immediately communicated to the applicant, which is great. You can open the attachments that have been linked to the case, but what I probably think is more exciting is this link that's open attachments in DigiPlan. And DigiPlan is that software that I said that we moved from OnBase to DigiPlan, because it's easier to use, it's more integrated, and it removes some of the stumbling blocks we had initially. And so if I were to log into DigiPlan, we can all review the plans simultaneous, and so when I put a comment as transportation, somebody in codes can see that immediately, and so the process of reviewing the plans happens instantaneous. This is for staff, and then after the plans review is finished, then a report will be attached to the case and immediately available to the applicant. And so it's a way of reducing some of the administrative work on staff, and so, you know, right now, it may be that somebody emails or hands in lists of comments that administrative staff manually type into the system, or somebody copies and pasts, and it'll eliminate that need, but also it'll be able to update the applicants pretty quickly. So the workflow allows the submission to be online in this portal. I think that Mr. Jones is going to, of course, prioritize customer service, and so if he has applicants that have trouble understanding or knowing how to upload in the portal, he has arranged their process so that they can come in the office and get that assistance in person, because it may be that a small business owner doesn't have the same technol... the tech savvy that you might see an architect have or an engineer, and so they're ready to, and they're anticipating that, and they're ready to serve that part of our demographic. And the cases are created, everybody can see them, they're routed to the proper departments, and so you can see, sometimes tracking down where a plan is, you know, requires a lot of phone calls, let me see where that is, and you find out, you think maybe it's in traffic, but it's really in stormwater, and so you will see who has approved the plans and then who has not, and so that's something that should be available to the applicant, but also management, and so it should be easier for them to see that data. Also, the dashboards let you know how many plans you have and keeps that information up to date, how many plans you approved, you can run reports easier, and the information is available throughout various departments. So Blueprints is a software that's been fairly successful for the city, but not everybody has it, and so we call it enterprise software. Not everybody in the city of Murfreesboro understands it, accesses it, and the public doesn't always know exactly where things are, so we think this is going to be a benefit for the system as well, the organization, to understand where plans are, where they're held up, and then maybe run reports on that. And so leadership will be able to identify bottlenecks and ensure timely processes. Of course, once they're approved, cases are closed, but that information does remain in the system so that we can run reports on them. And so the public access portal that we have, we have two cases, that's multiple dwelling unit and commercial plans review that's available today. We ask that you consider the revised and updated MSA and consider approving work order one, which will allow us to get the, all 54 workflows into the system with that aggressive timeline. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. Mr. Gore, of course, is prepared to answer any questions that you may have as well.
I think this is excellent. Very good. No comment?
I have one.
Okay.
I don't want to be the council member who's the archaeologist, you know, that is good at digging up old stuff, but we've been working on this for quite some time. What is a real... And Margaret Ann, you have not been working on it that entire time period, because I think this goes back like five years.
Nineteen.
So, seven years, six years. What's a good, realistic timeframe that we can feel like that will be implemented and completed?
Well, I'll answer that. The, in the, and we went back and forth with True North as a partner does, we've created, if you see on page 63, there is a one week per workflow. So those 26 workflows, we are gonna, we've got a schedule of ensuring that the visio diagram is appropriate for the workflow, getting it into test, having staff test it for a day, then getting confirmation that it works, and then putting it into production.
Okay.
So we are planning on, and it's going to take a lot of work from staff and a lot of work from True North to make sure that we bang these out, one per week, and so my expectation is 26 weeks, if we've got 26 workflows to produce. I can't tell you how thrilled I am, though, that we have commercial plan review and multi-tenant plan review. Now it's going to be, again, no longer requiring emails to, that fall through the crack. A applicant's going to see exactly where they are in the process, they're going to get emailed as they get through each hurdle of the process, and they'll be notified. It's going to take a ton of administrative work off folks. It's a watershed moment, in my opinion, and so I'm expecting to see nothing but positives roll off the line.
You're saying there'll be no more complaints about how long it takes?
There will be no more complaints about how long it takes.
Could be more accurate complaints.
I can't sign off on that, but yeah, there will be a drastic reduction in the number of complaints, because this is going to be, as the mayor has shown several times to me in other jurisdictions, being able to log in, see where your active projects are, see your history of projects performed in that jurisdiction. People are going to see exactly where they are and know if there's a hangup versus having a call, and as Margaret Ann said, staff trying to chase down where is it hung up on a manual process. So it's, it should expedite it, we should be faster, and it should cut down on frustration by the development community, because they're going to be able to see exactly where they are in the process.
But take the development community aside, you know, I know we've spent a lot of money on this process, but I'm more concerned with is how that we can save time and improve communication internally with the city, that, you know, we don't have to, every time we get a phone call and someone calls Darren, that Darren's like, well, I've got to call this person, and this person has to call this person. He's right there.
Right.
So, you know, we've said this for a long time, but digitization of this process makes it easier with all things in the city, and the historical data that you can keep, that we can pull up, if someone says, hey, I need you to pull up the structural engineer letter from our project in 2018, you click on the button and you can see where that is, as opposed to having to go in an Outlook file and find it where it was filed, and so we've, we're headed in the right direction, but it would be great to get to the end.
We will get to the end, everybody. I won't, don't want to speak for them, but this has been a very high priority for me, and I've made it a very high priority for staff, and I think the fact that we got, I told them I wanted commercial plans review and multi-tenant plans review available to demonstrate this to you today, before today, and they got it done, I think, Tuesday afternoon, maybe Wednesday morning?
Great work.
Monday.
Hey, Monday.
Great work.
What we appreciate is also, what's different today is that you have staff, and we've got supportive city council and management with the project, and you have staff dedicated to it. So Mr. Middleton, who works with me, is actually the smart one, who understands how all things work, so I think the investment also into staff with Devin, and then providing those resources to focus directly on this is helpful, and so I really appreciate that support.
This is kind of a software answer piece of this, but is there a hardware component? Do we have the capacity with our computer systems to be able to handle this kind of...
We believe we do. We've gotten the specifications for all the equipment. DigiPlan, probably to review the plans, has the most drain on the system, and so I think there's answers for existing equipment, where you can get additional processors that can help that. The good thing is, it's a SaaS model, which means there's a lot of cloud hosting, and so that's a benefit, and also you use URLs of websites to log on to this, so it's not really a hardware issue, but you do need a processor that can run the imaging, and I would like a caveat here, that things were loading slowly, not because of the software, but because we're having internet issues at the airport. So, just so you know, although, you know, I guess it's not...
It is a, one of the major components, so that we can start taking payments online, is we migrated to City Works Online, so it's a cloud-based, so it's not, it's not hosted on-premise or onsite, so it is cloud-based at this point.
And that's really where I think private sector, you know, like a lot of us now, you don't go into the bank anymore. You know, you use your phone, you take pictures of your deposits, like, it's not that the bank doesn't want to see us, and I think that's the same thing that you can say for our staff members, it's not that they don't want to see the people coming in and you want to take that personal touch out, but at the same time, if all of that can be done virtually, including payment, not having to run a checkup, that, you know, that's where we've headed. So, I mean, we're heading in the right direction, we just need to, we're at the five-yard line, we just need to punch it across and score, so. Do we have, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of spitballing this thing, you know, too, because I don't know a whole lot about it, but I'm just thinking all the security issues, and, you know, when you do something like this in the cloud, the security issues that you don't create, is there redundancy? Is there, you know, so to make sure that, you know, something happens in the cloud that we, have we thought about, is there security?
I don't know if we have someone here from IT, but we do have a cybersecurity IT position that that is their job, is to ensure that we are...
Hate to see, but that's the climate we're in.
Well, no, we're very risk averse when it comes to cybersecurity. We take that very seriously.
Okay.
We limit permissions that most staff can do, and, I mean, there's always that potential, and there's only so much you can mitigate for it, but we do have in-place security measures. In addition to Tremble, who owns the software, now that we contract directly with them, to respond and address those sorts of opportunities. Also, you know, it, I think most of this is close, is how, is hosted with Amazon, which is, I think, almost everything in the cloud is. There's always some sort of risk, but we are doing everything we can to mitigate it.
I'll just say this, I don't know how I'm going to vote, but I'm, I doubt, there's only so much technology can do, you can maximize technology. I mean, everybody's all about AI and all this stuff. At the end of the day, you still have to be customer-centric and customer-focused and good at communicating. And so we can have all this, but if there is a systemic issue with that, I'm still going to keep hearing, as will other council members, like, oh my God, I've got to go through Murfreesboro planning, I'm going to pull my hair out, I'm losing my mind. So I think this is good, but I think you should also ask, what else can we do to kind of change that image? Because I've heard it for, when I was running, I heard it, you know, saying, you know, I want businesses coming here because they want to do business, not that it's hard to do business with the city. I'll leave it at that.
And I think, Austin, speaking from someone who's been dealing with, you know, planning for, since 2000, I don't think that ever goes away, because it's almost like the parent that you're having to tell somebody no. So I think that planning and engineering gets a bad rap sometime, because sometimes developers don't want to hear what they, they think is right. I don't think that's necessarily taking the customer service away, so, you know, there'll be council members up here fifteen years from now that someone will be complaining that the nasty planning department is telling someone that they don't like their horse out in front of their building, or their car corrals, I'm smiling, Jamie.
Uh-huh.
But, you know, I, I think as long as it's measured and predictable, that's, you know, I'll say this, like, I deal with Williamson County. In Williamson County, it's a very, when you apply for a permit, here's the list of things that you have to put in that program, and then it immediately tells you when someone looks at it and when someone approves it. Or if something is, something's wrong and you need additional information, it tells you, hey, so-and-so, this is not acceptable, you need to work on this. But the process doesn't stop, everybody else is working on their stuff while this is over here. So, I mean, I think that's more, I hope, what we see, and not necessarily customer service declines, but what you will see, it gives our team the ability to work on other things that is just not so manual, that they can, they can have it in front of them. So, and I think you would hear that from most every contractor or developer or whoever, that if they can sit at their desk and do all the application process without printing something out, filling it out, scanning it in, emailing it in, then if you've got it all right there, it makes all of us more efficient.
The, the other thing it'll do, Austin, is when it emails the applicant to tell them where they are, if it's a third-party issue, like an engineer or something like that's holding it up, it takes the, there's a lot of times when I get complaints that it has nothing to do with city staff at all, it's, this engineering firm's holding it up, or this person over here's holding it up, but the city gets to be the big bad guy, it's the city's fault, but it has nothing to do with us. This will allow it to kind of go over there.
I bet the amount of time that Mr. Newman, or Greg, or our, have to go back and look at email chains and then write a, a summary of this is what has happened on a project since inception, I mean, there's no telling how many hours y'all spend going back when there is a complaint, you have to go through and research all that from, that instead of just being able to click on a link and it shows, here's everything that's happened on that project. I mean, the amount of labor hours that we can spend and devote to actually working in our business, or on our business, instead of in our business, I think will be transformational, which is why we've worked on this so long, and I think you've seen it in other municipalities, that this will be a benefit once we get it implemented.
Here's a thought, are we, we're going to just, at a certain date, there's, we'll start doing this, or are we going to go backwards and enter data from previous years?
We, we're going to have to start at a certain date.
Okay.
And, and just a reminder, we do have an organizational and operational assessment, RFCSB, coming out to kind of come in and, and determine from us, from different perspectives, are we meeting best practice standards and timing, and how do we really compare to our peers? And I expect customer service and, obviously, customer service-centric is, got to be the, the hub around which we, I mean, that's why we're doing this, is so that we create a better customer experience. We also, so PLL coming in here is going to be wrapped into that operational kind of assessment that I think we want to, we want to see. Are there, are there things we can do better? So, but, but treating the customer well and being service-centric is, is absolutely the mission.
Darren, I've said enough, but this is not, I, I want the staff members to know that this is not like a got you, that we're trying to make any department look bad, but I think if this were the private sector, and we have had a project that has lasted since 2019, most people would be having much different discussions than what we're having right now on voting to extend and get a project and continue funding that. I mean, I, I know if my customers, I had a project that was going on seven years, and the project, that would be a different discussion. So that's not what this is about. We want, the council's been very, very supportive, we've funded it, we've talked about it, and so now we just need to finish.
Yes.
Does anyone have a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I think we need to, yeah, we have to vote to spend the change, or the, the next, next step.
So moved.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Mayor Shachet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Margaret Ann, thanks for your hard work. All right, let's move to the city's social media and internet posting policy updates.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. The original ordinance on the city's social media and internet posting policy regarding the use of social media by the city was adopted in 2011. In 2013, the employee handbook related to city's social media was also adopted then. Staff has been working on updates with this resolution and employee handbook, basically based on things regarding usage, case law, trends, and other strategies. In your packet, you'll find the draft of the resolution and the draft of the employee handbook sections on these updates. Happy to entertain any more questions or comments you may have on this. And if everyone is in agreement with these updates, this will come back to you for a vote at your next council meeting.
I don't think we need a motion, but if there's any comments over the next couple of weeks or week that you see, just talk to Darren or talk to Allen. All right, thank you, Allen. All right, let's move to CIP transfers, or do you have any question for, questions for Aaron and CIP transfers? All right, seeing them, we'll move to 2024 sewer allocation annual report.
Good afternoon. So this is, again, the 2024 annual report. It is a little late, you all are used to hearing this in January, but it took Darren a little, and I, a little time to get together and for him to pass the information along.
Valerie's now the sewer allocation guru.
With the help of Ashley.
Well, or Ashley is, or some.
Yes. So I'll get started. The executive summary, our system is in good shape, as is. Our sewer rehabilitation program is paying off, and you'll see some slides to that effect in, in this report, to, which helps us regain capacity. We are creating new connections by funding a collection system and water, we, water resource recovery facility upgrades, which are always getting more expensive. As far as sewer allocation, we only have thirteen properties. As you know, with the ordinance, the sewer allocation ordinance, it requires a property owner or developer to pay in ten percent of what their sewer connection fees would be in order to reserve capacity, and it be saved for their project. And out of all of the city, we only have thirteen project, projects or properties that have secured capacity. We know that the WRF has the ability to handle our hydraulic flows with the increase in connections, with a few upgrades that we're doing now. And although going through this report, we have still got some hotspots in the area where we have sewer capacity limitations, and I'll go over those as well. And then one of those hotspots, most recent, is area east of Memorial, along Memorial, east of Memorial, between Compton Road and DeJohn at Lane. We have asked planning to, you know, allow developments up to four single-family units per acre until we can achieve some additional capacity at a sewer pump station at the north end of that area. We'll go over some of the basics, reviewing system assets and the effects of rain and its, its effects on our system for inflow and infiltration. Here, this slide, you can see the green pluses reflect the amount of money we've spent on sewer rehab since 2008, close, a little over thirty million. The blue trend line, as you can see, it's in a downward trend since 2008 up until 2024. That is our infiltration and inflow. And inflow is, say, we have a heavy rain, and we have a sewer casting that's off, and as you all know, most of our sewer interceptor lines are along the creek. If that casting is off and water is inflowing into that, that manhole, that's what we call as inflow, and infiltration is the groundwater that may be seeping into our pipes through cracks or breaks in the, in the main. So you can see that through our rehab efforts, that that line is, is definitely trending in the right direction. Review of the basics, kind of sewer 101. Changed up this a little bit to add in pictures that you all may or may not have seen. This is an aerial photography photo of our water resource recovery facility, which is, you know, kind of the bucket. And then outside the fence, we have our sewer pump stations, which is the picture in the middle, and our pipes and manholes, and this takes on sewer and pumps it to the WRF. We have a separate sewer system, and it, you can see that, you know, from the house, sewer flows through the pipes to our water resource recovery facility, I'm just going to say WRF from now on. As far as stormwater, it flows to our streams. The, you know, the treatment facility and the pipes, they are very expensive to expand, and we've learned that with our most recent expansion out in the Salem-Barfield area. We have expanded our WRF in 2017, which was forty-plus million, and next expansion, if approved by TDEC, will be sixty-five-plus million, and we are still working on that. Modeling, we have sewer flow monitors in our system through ADS Environmental Services, and each year, they, you know, we get these graphs, and it shows us kind of what our, in the, in the red line, what our winter average would be compared to the green line as our summer average flows into the WRF. Right now, we have eighty thousand, approx, little over eighty thousand current sewer connections in the system. Of those, sixty-seven percent are residential or other facilities, and thirty-three percent are apartment connections. And what this data from ADS tells us is, is we can use that data to see what our peaks are between our summer average and our winter average. And right now, this year, in 2024, we have approximately, our winter average is approximately one-point-six times the summer average, or three hundred and eighty-seven gallons per day per new connection. This is also a graphic that shows you how our rains affect our flows at the water resource or WRF, said I was going to say that. On the left-hand column is the flows into the WRF, up to thirty million on the left, and then rain inches on the right, the bottom axis. The red, the red is our summer, summer points, and the winter is our blue. And, and so you can see, the more rain we get, the more flows we have at our WRF. Now, we're going to review our as-is, which is our existing system, and the 2B condition is with system improvements. We'll review the number of sewer connections in each basin and funding necessary for increased sewer connections. Flow getting to our WRF must go through, through three pump stations, our overall creek, our main pump station, and our southwest regional station. And this is the as-is configuration. These are, these numbers represent our flow monitors in the system, and you can see how those flow monitors go to each of those three stations, and then again to the WRF. Our as-is model, this kind of gives you a snapshot of our connections into each of those basins. Right now, as-is available sewer connections, we have around almost ninety-five thousand connections available. Total approved sewer connections is seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six, and total remaining as-is sewer connections without improvements is around eighty-seven thousand. You can see here on the lower left, basin twelve A and fourteen, that, that area is our Joby Jackson and Buchanan area sewer flow monitors, which goes to our County Farm Road pump station, shown kind of in this CF little snippet there. And we have improvements planned for the County Farm Road, Road Station for this next year, so those connections you'll see here in just a minute will come up. Again, this is as-is basis, you can see that we're all in the green, which has, has over four thousand available connections, and except for the County Farm Road, which we have improvements. Those improvements, as you will see just a minute, don't necessarily get us out of the red. The 2B is our improvements. We, the 2B improvements, we still have overall creek, southwest, and main pump station, which are, we won't have improved, additional improvements to those, but the Cherry Lane corridor will bring three new pump stations along that corridor, and so those six stations will bring flow to our WRF. The current wet weather improvements at the WRF are six-point-four million. The Cherry Lane, we anticipate will be, we're hoping it's less, but put out a number of thirty-three-point-three million. That includes, includes gravity sewer along the length of Cherry Lane, Forest Main along the length, three pump stations, and a repurified water line along the full length of Cherry Lane, at least the two phases that are left. And then we have two hundred and fifty thousand at the County Farm Road pump station, so six-point-two-eight million in upgrades. We've spent twelve-point-eight million, which was at the overall creek pump station, and we have fifty million in future expenses. The 2B, which is after improvements, will give us a little over one hundred and five sewer connections with those upgrades. Total approved sewer connections, again, are the seven hundred, seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six, and leaves us 2B sewer connections for the future of ninety-eight thousand, little over ninety-eight thousand. You can see our improvements to County Farm Road, that station was built with two wet wells, and so to upgrade that sta- That station was built with two wet wells, and so to upgrade that station, it doesn't give us out of the red. We still have less than 1,500 connections at that, in those two basins. That also, so it includes speeding up the pumps by changing the belts and sheaves and as well as putting a generator at the site. Depending on how that area continues to grow, we will have to possibly look at future improvements there to continue to serve. 2B, this 2B condition again adds 11, a little over 11,000 connections, which is a 13% increase from last year. Again, this is the 2B connections, showing that we're all in the green except for the County Farm Road area. Ding, we'll go through that again. We still have the 50 million remaining in upgrades to Cherry Lane, the WRF, and the County Farm Road Station. The existing total connected and approved connections, you can see how that has grown over the years. We've gone from 83,000 to 87,000 connections. The available as-in, as-is connections, you can also see how that's grown. We have 87,000 as-is connections. And then the 2B connections for this year are a little over 11,000. That gives us, with 50 million remaining in improvement costs, this equates to about $4,521 per connection, per future connection. And then review of sewer connection growth and plan approvals. The non-apartment connections are the majority of our connections, and you can see how those have increased each year. The apartment connections are in the orange and non-apartment connections that are approved are in the light blue, and then apartments that are approved. You can see how our apartments have, make up just, you know, again, 33, about 33% of our connections and how those have grown through the years. Total approved sewer connections, we keep up with those by basin each, each year. And so right now, again, this is where the 7,666 connections, approved sewer connections. Those are encompass mainly in our basins 1311 and 13A. 13, as you can see, both, both of those are on the western and southwestern side of town, which is our, obviously our fastest growing. Assessment takeaways. Again, the Cherry Lane corridor will entail three new pump stations between 840 and Memorial Boulevard. Really, yeah. The pump stations, again, the Cherry Lane will go abroad, but our pump stations will remain closer to 840. Wet weather capacity upgrades at the WRF are critical, and these upgrades were bid in the third quarter of 2024 and are anticipated to be completed in May of 2026. Again, I state the County Farm Road is slated for upgrades, including a generator. We're continuing to work with TDEC to expand the WRF's NPDES permit limits to hopefully receive approval for an expansion. And then, these are the hotspots, and I can show you graphically, but Memorial Boulevard north of the Sportscom, which is in basin eight that I mentioned, that we've asked planning to limit connections or new projects to four single-family units per acre until we can figure out additional capacity or gain additional capacity at the VA pump station, which is at the Publix across from the VA. East Main Street, east of Middle Tennessee Boulevard, that is a basin that has sewer limitations and it's kind of been in place for a while. We have kind of instituted or approved or restricted the connections there to two and a half single-family units per acre. Casey Lane, towards the northeast end, kind of where the Verizon used to be and Old Time Pottery in that area, it's gonna require improvements underneath I-24. And then South Church Street around Joby Jackson, we have sewer limitations there that may require, as it develops, may require some downstream improvements. And I'll, not quite through, I'll show you these hotspots real quick. This is basin eight in the Memorial-Compton Road area. And then down at the bottom of this is the area in East Main Street. It's kind of south of MTSU. And then this is the area in red, that's highlighted in red, along Casey Lane to the north and south of Highway 96, and the sewer improvement under I-24. And then the other small red area on the bottom of the page is the South Church Street.
Where's the Bucys?
It will be going at Joby Jackson interchange. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is the Bucys seriously like the capacity there?
It is there.
It is there.
There, but we will definitely, after Bucys comes in, we will definitely have to be looking and being cognizant of other connections in the area.
Okay.
Any questions for Valerie? That's good stuff. All right, thank you Valerie.
Thank you.
Let's talk about trees. Darren.
Sir, share my screen here. So I wanted to introduce this issue to the council. Some of you may or may not have been, let's see if I'm getting this on here. Oh, there we go. Talked with staff, we've had some issues, and I'll, I'll go through the, the problem here, if I can get this to actually work. All right, I'm not sure if that's gonna, okay, here we go. There's, the current problem, arbors at Compton, there was a disconnect between what was promised and what is, was designed and constructed with regards to protecting tree lines. I'm going to, well, play this, if it will. I'm not sure why I'm not hearing it.
We did vote to upgrade the audio and video.
Well, what, what this, what this video is from, is from a planning commission back in 2021, where the design engineer had come up and highlighted those red. They were putting in 10-foot common areas to quote, protect the tree lines, the mature tree lines between the new development and the county property. The problem, and I'll show this, is that those, those tree lines, those tree lines, the canopy was much wider than 10 to 15 feet.
Explain what you mean by the canopy.
The, the canopy is, or the drip line, the drip line of a tree is considered, if you walk up to the tree, as far as the branches and the leaves extend out to it, that's where the root system, if you take a perpendicular line from the outside branches down to the ground, that is called the drip line, and that is where the roots, if you get into the drip line, you are ultimately going to be compromising that tree, damage that tree, and it, and likely kill it. So the problem that we had originally was that we didn't, we needed probably more like 25 or 30 feet of a common area or a non-disturbed area. Problem number two is, again, you can kind of see these contours, the, the grading and drainage, it encroached into some of the, the areas that they said were intended to preserve these trees. And problem number three, they showed a limited disturbance all the way to the property line. So this is where I say we had a disconnect. There was, there was assurances made at the planning commission level that there was, these tree lines were gonna be reserved, preserved and protected. Plans didn't reflect that. So the result is we've had about, a loss of about 50 trees on the eastern property line of Compton, the arbors at Compton, and we've got about 100 more trees that are compromised. I've been out there, rode the property line with the, with the property owner. You can see in this particular instance, there's trees that are falling on to his, the Miller's property, and there's trees that are falling over onto the Arbor-Compton's property. They're leaning, the trees are damaged, those, that ultimately, that entire tree line is gonna come down. It may not be tomorrow, it may be five years from now, but these trees are basically just hanging on to a, with a compromised root system that's, they're, they're gonna fail and collapse. So what's the city's authority in this regard? This is, I don't want to go into too much here, but basically, part of the erosion and sediment control plan through our stormwater management section, we have the ability to get a general description of existing land cover and stands of trees as they are to be preserved upon project completion. So these EP and SC plans are supposed to, if there's assurances made that trees are gonna be preserved, then the, the erosion prevention and sediment control plan should, should show how these trees are gonna be preserved. So we have that authority and the, they show the approximate limits of clearing. So we have incorporated the Tennessee Erosion and Sediment Control Handbook into our city code by reference. There are, Control Handbook provides specs for tree protection, and you can kind of see incorrect. This would be kind of what we did at, at the arbors where, hey, we're gonna protect 10 feet? Well, we really, the drip line, as you can see here, it really needed to be protected. The roots, in order for the roots to be protected, you had to have a disturbance all the way out to the edge of the tree. So you, here it is, "Do not excavate, traverse, or feel closer than the drip line or perimeter of the canopy of trees to be preserved." Here's my definition of drip line. So the remedies, so what we've done immediately is we put it, put a hold on the lots where the future homes would be built. You can see here, there's about six lots here that I felt like could be, if, if a home was built, a tree could fall on it. So we put building permit holds on those six lots until, really until that tree line is either taken down or there's some, some protective measure. I mean, it would be crazy, I think, for us to build homes that could have a tree fall on it in a, in a bad storm. And long-term remedy, and this is something we've sat down, we've talked, and I've had this presentation with staff too, we sat down one, one day up in room two, 218, and went through this. And we're gonna identify common boundary tree lines, we're gonna demarcate the limit of disturbance as the drip line, put that, indicate that an orange barrier protective fencing is to be placed and install it at that drip line before a land disturbance permit is issued. So going forward, it's not gonna help the situation at the arbors at Compton, those trees are pretty much, they're gone. But in the future, we're just gonna be much more diligent, much more conscious, especially if, if, if one of the ways in which the plan is being approved by the planning commission and the council is the fact that we're preserving tree lines for, for our neighbors. If they make that assurance or assert that that's, that's what they intend to do, then we've got a way to enforce that. So I'm open for comments and questions, if you have any.
How many total trees will die?
Well, I think if, and I didn't go count them. I'm taking the property owner's word on this, but said that 50 have, have died or fallen, and he expects there's, there's 100 more in that tree line on that eastern line, so 150.
Speaking of tree lines, I constantly get citizens contacting me about Haynes Drive. When you turn off a memorial going on Haynes like you're going to Thompson Lane.
Okay.
Trees that are, limbs that are hanging over on the street, and some of them are getting low. Are we responsible for clearing that?
I don't, I don't think so. I think if they were around power lines, I know that the power company would be, would be peeling those back. Does anybody from engineering have an idea? I don't, I don't know if we would put that, if it gets into the right of way, I think we would probably just tell the homeowner that they needed, they were the one who would be responsible for, for cutting those back.
Yeah, some of them are in the right of way, because I know when I go down there, some of them are hanging pretty low.
Lexi, you look like you want to say something.
I believe the street department will trim trees if they are hindering vehicles, if they're hanging over into the right of way.
Okay. Then we can, we can talk to Raymond about that.
I, I just think the overall, Jamie and Sean, I was watching a planning commission that you guys had the discussion on.
You should really get a hobby man.
Oh, I know, Old Las Cassis, and it was the storage facility that's going on at Old Las Cassis, and the developer was really talking about that tree line in between Stratford Hall. And I think if the developer is gonna get up and assure that they're not doing a buffer because they're using the existing tree line, then they better make sure that they protect that tree line. And in this case, what's happened is even these trees are not on maybe the developer's property, but they've come in and where they've excavated out their retention and their, their drainage, they've clearly destroyed all those trees.
That's right.
So I, I know it puts another onus on planning to have to keep up with something, but really, you know, if the engineer gets up and they say that they're gonna use a buffer, we had the same thing happen across on Manson Pike, the development that was next to Shelton, and they came in and mass graded an entire tree line, then there should be some consequences if they're telling as, as a basis of approval to keep the buffer, and then they don't, they don't do that. And it looks like that's what y'all are doing, but maybe what we have to do is look at our zoning in our approval process, that it's not just a 10 or 15-foot common area easement, it's gotta go outside of what the actual buffer of the trees are gonna be, not just to the property line.
Right.
So that's, that's not fair to the homeowner if a development comes in and they don't protect that tree line like what they say they're gonna, gonna protect. That's not the intent of approval.
Well, this one specific, I was trying to remember, when it came through, was it stated that they were gonna try to keep the trees if possible, but didn't guarantee keeping the trees?
Yeah, that's what the video, if the video had worked, you would have heard the engineer basically say that that common, the reason they have a 10-foot common bound, it's a, it's a, it's a common area that the HOA was going to be responsible for maintaining, and the reason they put it there was to quote, safeguard and protect those trees. And it just wasn't enough.
Right.
To begin with, but the fact that the contractor got into it, even got into the 10 feet.
Right.
Exacerbated the problem. My, my next step, I'd, I'd like to do this and share this with the planning commission as well, and as long as everyone's, because this will impact lots. I mean, if you've got a very mature tree line and you're now saying, you gotta keep a 30-foot buffer off of a common boundary line, it could, it could affect lot yield. I want to have a meeting with the, or present this to the planning commission, and if everyone gives me the nod, I think under our current regulations and current city code, we can require it as of right now, but give a, give a stakeholder memo and a, kind of a, the reason why, and push that out to our, to our contractors and our development community and our stakeholders to let them know that we're, we're gonna start enforcing this.
Can we, and I appreciate what the planning commission, their opinions, but there's only two elected members on the planning commission.
Right.
A lot of these site plans don't make it to the city council, they just are at the planning commission level. And, and I, that, that goes into what we're gonna be talking about here in the, our next topic, but, you know, as development continues, and this is just my opinion, so the council y'all chime in, if there's an existing tree line that can be saved in between adjacent properties, we need to do everything we can to save those. You drive through the majority of subdivisions in our community and there are no trees. And so it seems like it would make sense that if at all possible, you, that's something we would require, just to say, use, Madeline's got a great example, the Haynes property that's on Haynes Drive that's sat there next to, I forget what the subdivision is, River Ravenwood. There's a tree line, it's existing tree line that's been there for, as long as that subdivision's been developed. And I would think it would be fair if the planning commission approves lots, that they don't go in and just mass grade all those trees out.
It's a good point, because you know, the, I'll, I'll pick on Brian Burns for a minute. You know, he's doing You know, he's doing a lot of these homes downtown, so he's running into this, you know, there's two houses that go down, you've got an existing tree line all around that lot probably. So, yeah, we probably need a little more guidance around that so that you maintain them, especially on these, when you knock down two to put in eight townhomes, you know, for example.
But in that, maybe that's the discussion, especially on, like downtown, that if you're going to take a tree line down, then your, your buffer that you're going to plant back is going to be extensive if you're taking those, those tree lines down.
Who's at fault on this, Darren? You know, it's.
Well, the.
So, I've learned Darren, if you say allegedly in front of everything.
Yeah, who's allegedly at fault there?
Well, the, the, the design is at fault. And.
Allegedly.
The contractor, and, and the contractor's at fault because I don't think that they necessarily allegedly adhere to the design. And, you know, and, and maybe the requirement, when they came in asserted the fact that it was 10 foot, only 10 foot was needed, we should have said, no, you need more. So, I, I think it's just, it's something that has happened in the past, it's happening now, I just, we got to be smarter about it and not let it happen in the future.
But, but take note, we're having this discussion and these are not city residents, these are, this is, this is a county subdivision.
That's right.
But.
It's a, it's a city subdivision, but it's county neighbors.
Saying the county, the neighbors are all not in an incorporate, or not in the incorporated area, but it's the right thing that we approve something with that tree line remaining and now, you know, I got an email two weeks ago that one of the trees had fallen and a lady's still laying in her backyard right now. So, there, there's some issues that are, that are going on with this.
May I see the slides, is the immediate remedy, you know, you're putting a hold on those one, two, three, four, six lots, the tree line is removed by the contractor or mother nature. I mean, if the contractor got in there and killed it, I think he's getting off kind of light, to be honest. I think he needs to rectify it now until, instead of, instead of building out houses and stuff, he needs to fix the tree line before he proceeds any further.
So, I, I just know that the Millers have retained legal representation and have been, and I may let Adam speak more to this, but they have engaged Lennar's attorneys.
Allegedly.
I can confirm that.
Yeah, and, and they've actually engaged with us as well. So, I, I think there's going to be an attempt to try to mediate or come up with what's the right thing to do. However, if we put a stop work order on that project, it absolutely would create a, an urgency, but we would probably get, we would probably enter into the lawsuit at that point, I think, if we put a stop work order on it.
So, Adam, what happens if we have an applicant that has come through and there's a issue with a existing subdivision that we have that was told to us at the time of approval, how does that translate into other projects that they may have in the city of Murfreesboro? I mean, is that something that we take into account, like, hey, you didn't perform on this one and do what you said you were going to do, so what means that you're going to do that if you're coming, bringing another project forward? I mean, I know we can't take that into consideration, but is that something that we at least could ask questions about?
I think you'd ask questions about it, I think you could say, okay, because of this happened in this previous development project, we're going to make sure that we're, we're, there are things in the specifications and the conditions for the project, the project approval, whether that's at the, you know, at the, the approval of the zoning, the approval of the PRD or PUD, or at a site plan stage, that, that, that we're putting in the types of conditions that Darren is talking about to make sure that something that happened in the past does not get repeated in the future.
Does anyone have any issues with this next step on protecting buffers or, our two planning commission members, y'all have any?
I think it'd be a good idea to find a way to protect them if, if possible. I, I have a concern like Darren, if we come 30 foot in, how many lots do we kill coming 30 foot in? So, what, what does that look like going forward?
I mean, the easiest response to that would be where, if a developer wants to save the money of an existing tree line, then you maybe lose some lots, but if you, if you want to get those lots, then you're going to have to weigh, this is the buffer I'm going to be required to put and weigh.
When you design it.
What's, what's your cost benefit analysis? Darren, do you need anything from us on this?
No, sir, I think we're, we're going to try to work it out and if it doesn't get worked out, we may, we may look at accelerating the, I almost say accelerating the, the getting that, the, the bottom line is that tree line needs to come down and how do we get it down and, and get something back that's, that's at least provide some, again, of that visual and that noise buffer. The right thing would be for Lennar to say, okay, we'll do it and we'll put a buffer back, but if they don't, then we may have to strategize a little bit more and come up with a different tactic that I would come back to the council with.
And we need to relay Elijah Harris and Eric Toomes and Ron Dennis, they've put a lot of time going out and, and really looking at these, so we let them know, we appreciate how hard that they're working on not only protecting the county neighborhood, but making sure that future homeowners are protected.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, joint conceptual workshop intro.
I wanted to just introduce this concept to the council. This is something that in, in discussions with the city of Franklin, city administrator and their mayor, that they have, they have a joint conceptual workshop between the council and the planning commission members. And so, they, they show their development plan process and you can see here at step six, a joint conceptual workshop. So, what does that, what does that really, what is that for and what does that mean? Well, it's to, the key, the key purpose is to foster open discussion between applicants and voting body members about proposed development plans, get early feedback, it allows that initial feedback on the conceptual aspects of a development proposal before formal decisions are made, highlights key issues, modifications to standards is the thing I saw primarily is if a development needs modification to the city's standards, staff necessarily, doesn't necessarily, is empowered to allow those modifications. Those modifications are brought to the council and the planning commission members to see if there's a favorable or an unfavorable condition that would disallow approval through the, the normal process. Encourage collaboration and most importantly, no decisions are made, this is really just a, it's a pitch. They come in, they tell you what they would like to do and does this meet the vision of the council and the planning commission in, as far as the future land use map or is this the correct land use for a certain area of town? No public comment is, is, is allowed and no, no, again, decisions are made. So, when I, I watched about three of these this weekend, I need to get a better hobby too, I guess, but watch, there's, so, the agenda's published with the presentation material. It gives specified time on each topic, right, so that it doesn't keep going too long. So, it, it, the agenda items are conceptual projects, vision of land use, proposed zoning changes, request for modifications of standards. And basically, staff doesn't run the, it's, it's a very brief intro by staff where they say, hey, these are the things we can agree on, these are the things we need more information on and these are the things we necessarily can't approve. And so, the developer or the developer's rep provides information, members ask questions, no deliberation or action is taken and the city moves on to the next workshop item. I call it a temperature reading kind of meeting. I've given a, and I can give you the, all these are actually published online for Franklin, very interesting to watch. This is kind of, this, I know it's a busy slide, but this is kind of their, their agenda. All the, the presentations are uploaded and again, you can kind of see 4:30 to 5:05, 5:05 to 4, I mean, it gives time on each topic so that you stay on task. Some of the things we've got coming up that I think I'd like to run a pilot of this before we implement it as a routine deal, but we have situations like this where there's a self-storage site opportunity out on Old Last Cassis, that does not, the future land use map shows this is residential. So, this would be something that, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't align with the future land use map, but is it something that the council would be amenable to? There's the discussion of about 100 acres off of Franklin Road, it would take a sewer extension. Would the city be interested in zoning and annexing this particular piece of property and giving up that sewer access or the sewer capacity for whatever use they would have in mind? Another thing here is we're talking about, there's a, there's a proposed plan off Halls Hill Pike, about 17 and a half acres, it's outside the service infield boundary for our future land use map. There's been a request, even though we have city limits right across the street, sewer's in the Halls Hill Pike, but we're saying, oh, this is outside the service infield boundary. Would the council be willing to move that service infield boundary to, to take on this, this project? Another one, this was the Mercury Boulevard PUD amendment that is still kind of, I'm not sure exactly where we are on that, but in limbo, this was the, the mid-rise apartments over here off Mercury, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And lastly, like there's a Manchester site plan, it looks like that's some, some significant warehousing, this could be something that we'd want to bring to the, to the joint workshop as well. Again, it's, it's giving staff the, the green light, yellow light, red light types, type feedback and giving the developer an opportunity to, to ask for the modifications to standards and to give you all a concept, it may not align with the future land use map, but it does, it is something that you would see favorable moving forward. So, if you all are okay with this concept, I would like again to talk to the planning commission, try to facilitate, my, my idea would be if we could put, and bring the planning commission one o'clock meetings to the airport, to the business center here and before that one o'clock, if we have some conceptual items to work through, serve lunch, maybe start that meeting 11:30 or 12 and run a joint council workshop prior to the one o'clock planning commission meeting. And if everybody, and, and again, per Franklin, this has put a big, put, put a lot of salve on some customer service issues where staff doesn't, isn't seen as the, the ultimate, you know, gatekeeper or, or denier of, of something that they want to move forward. It, it offers a collaborative environment that gets, gives the, the planning commissioners, the council members and staff all in a room together and agrees to, are we willing to make, be flexible and, and offer some modifications to our standards for this project? So, if you've got any questions, I'm available.
Any questions for Darren?
Good idea. Might save some time to, everybody spends a lot of effort to get to a certain point and they don't really know where the outage points is, are, or the concern might be until they get to us and then all of a sudden, they put all this work into it and, you know, we, there was something that they didn't know about, maybe staff didn't know about it or maybe they didn't realize how concerned we were, would be about it when it came to a vote, so I like this idea.
You've hit the nail on the head, it really is to avoid staff greenlighting a project to the point where a lot of investment's made and then it, when it finally comes to light at the council or planning commission meeting, there's a lot of, it's a red light. We didn't want, we don't want to see this here, why did this get, how did this get this far? So, it's to avoid those kind of situations.
I think, I think our team would appreciate that feedback.
Absolutely.
Feel like that they're picking and choosing which projects they think maybe would get support. It works great. All right, let's move to item 11, the TDOT modernization call for projects. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity.
So, from that moment on, I really.
A TDOT statewide partnership program established through the Transportation Modernization Act provide financial support to local governments for major roadway improvements. Qualified communities must commit local funds, must commit local funding towards eligible projects. In 2023, council approved funding for development of a concept report for Memorial Boulevard developed by Neil Schaefer. Mr. Greg Judy is here for technical questions if you have them. The report recommends widening Memorial Boulevard from Thompson Lane to Jefferson Pike from two lanes to a three lane cross-section with curb and gutter sidewalks and a multi-use path. This project is included in the transportation department's current five-year plan. The city recently annexed Memorial Boulevard to Walter Hill Bridge. As such, the request is for the widening improvements to the limits of the city's jurisdiction, which is approximately 2.1 miles. The primary purpose of the widening of Memorial Boulevard is to accommodate the increased traffic generated from Cherry Lane extension to I-20, I-840. Keeping Memorial Boulevard a two-lane capacity highway with a five-lane arterial terminating into it will overwhelm Memorial Boulevard and result in a level service F for the intersection. Here's the level of service analysis, this is existing, this is base year with the existing geometry. I'm sorry, the base year without, without proposed geometry and here's the base year, five year with improvements. A total of 294 crashes occurred along this segment during a three-year period along Memorial Boulevard, which just has a crash rate of 3.626, which is higher than the statewide The proposed cross-section is a five-lane curb and gutter and will also include a shared use path along the corridor. With the implementation of this shared path, it would basically top Walter Hill all the way down to Barfield as a multi-use path, which I think Nate, Nate would enjoy that, having that access. Here's an example of the concept plan, starting at Thompson Lane. The multi-use path is on the eastern portion of Memorial Boulevard that runs consistently And of course, you know, the issue is why, why does it fail? Bottlenecks, we've got bottlenecks throughout this system, throughout this corridor, it's increased risk of accidents and basically it's inefficient traffic. The cost estimate based off of the TDOT model, it's showing a total of 40, uh, current date dollars at a total of $46,500. We are projecting out to six-year window at a, at a potentially a $64 million project for this. The, currently the city has three, basically 3.9 million allocated toward this project in existing MED proceeds. To meet the funding requirement of TDOT's program and prioritizing Memorial Boulevard, staff proposes allocating an additional little over 2.21 million from future borrow to reach a $25 million local commitment. The investment would represent approximately 40% of the estimated 62.9 million total project With that, I'm available for questions.
You mentioned the county. What's, what's their mood on the further comments there to widening up to Jefferson Pike?
I missed that section. I'm, I'm sorry. I missed that section in my, in my.
Dang it, Jim.
Maybe they can take some shared opinion.
Yeah, well, we, we have actually, you know.
Made it a whole council session without those words.
We met with the council yesterday. So myself, Darren, Jim, Mayor Carr, and Phil Dodd. Phil had really been asking about how we can partner on roads. And so I, I think they were talking about their capital improvement plans getting ready to come up. So, and there was even, Darren didn't have anything to do at 10 o'clock last night, sent a text message out to everybody with another idea. And so I think they're going to maybe look at other municipalities and how that other municipalities, counties and TDOT are partnering together. So I felt like it went really well yesterday.
It did. It was a, it was a good conversation. And I think they're, they're wanting to participate. It's just how do they, you know, how do they do that and get their commission, missionaries to approve, approve the funding? But we, we are collaborating with them and trying to move forward. And I've also had some additional conversations with TDOT this morning, Mayor, that it sounds like there might be some opportunities for them to go ahead and possibly move forward being the situation they're in.
That was really, that was the discussion yesterday overall. How do we partner with the county to do additional road projects like we've done at Halls Hill Pike, Siegel Road, Fortress Boulevard?
Florence Road.
Florence Road. But how do we partner to do that? It was, it was good. It's just time and money.
Any questions?
Any questions for Jim? So come back to us for another vote, correct?
Yeah, we wanted to introduce you to the topic. The compelling, the compelling aspect of this is we are, and I, to use my hydraulic language, we're about to put a 24 pipe, 24-inch pipe into an 8-inch pipe. When we get Cherry Lane from I-840 to Memorial, five lanes, and all that, that traffic is going to get generated along there, and we're going to tee that into a two-lane, 231, it is going to be, is not going to be good.
It's going to be not, yeah.
It's not going to be good.
And that's a good analogy. I hadn't even thought about that, Darren. Jim, I think it'd be helpful, and I asked you about Broad Street, just what are those traffic flows around town for those, you know, key intersections, key roadways? Because that's important, but I know there's stuff on the west side that's important. Everything is.
Yeah, everything is important.
You know, just from a traffic flow, I would appreciate just kind of know, like, what's next beyond this, I guess, when I'm getting that.
Well, that's a good question. Depends on funding, of course. But, you know, we're, we're working on Rutherford Boulevard, trying to get it actually out and constructed. We're, we're in the preliminary phases of doing some geometric work along Broad Street, Southeast Broad Street at Rutherford Boulevard. That's one. Another one, you know, we're doing some preliminary work at MLK and Broad Street to try to get additional capacity out that way and, and try to minimize the bottlenecks, which are the intersections that are kind of, you know, shutting this stuff down. So those are the, the immediate ones that are, that we're looking at.
Councilman, I did ask Jim, I said, what's compelling on the funding side of this? What, what is, would we, if we're competing with other improvements in town, why, why this one? And the, again, the compelling comment was, hey, if we can get 60 cents on the dollar to get that improvement done, you know, get to, if we can cap our participation, we, we cannot fund that project on our own, that field project.
And not have to manage it.
Right, and not manage it, which is a big, a big item too. TDOT would have to manage it.
Shane was worried about traffic flow around MTSU during football games, but, you know, that's not an issue, you know, most sadities.
We'll have our adaptive system working and everything will be fine.
All right.
Mayor.
You have an introduction.
Yes. I would like to introduce to Mayor and council, our new deputy director of transportation. You may recognize him, Mr. Lee Smith. He's from TDOT. He was, he did two presentations, I think, at this podium here on the Spark Corridor project. But Lee's been here about a month, and we're, we're glad to have him.
He's a Riverdale guy, right?
Jay's a Riverdale guy. He was a, a city traffic engineer in Pensacola as well. He, he's worn a lot of hats.
What is that school you're talking about?
Never heard of that name? You're an Oakland guy. OK.
That's the name we shall not mention.
We're like, Charles, we're the Oakland guys.
That's right. Lee, glad you're here.
I get it.
All right, let's move to the June 2025 dashboard. Any questions for Aaron?
You have a good birthday?
It's been great so far.
In honor of Aaron's birthday, let's move to beer permits.
Thank you. We have two regular permits today. One is for an ownership change of a grocery market located at 817 Northwest Rod. The other's for a new restaurant located at 2858 South Church. And then we have five special event permits. Three are for the Kinnerly Family History Group on October 3rd, 13th, and 31st. The Interfaith Dental Clinic is hosting a fundraiser on November 6th, and Ascension St. Thomas is hosting one on the 25th of October.
Questions for Ms. Tucker? Are all these in order?
Yes.
Can we get a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater, Ms. Gels Harris.
Hi.
Mr. Maxwell.
Hi.
Ms. Shacklett.
Hi.
Mr. Wade.
Hi.
Mr. Wright.
Hi.
Manick Phile.
Hi, no statements to be paid. Any other business from staff? Or the business from council?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to present something to you. I'm going to pass this around, let you have a copy of it. Something that's kind of been a burr under my saddle for several, several years now, and I've had some con, conversations with our staff. And I thought it's, before we move any farther, because it may require some staff time and a commitment from, is that enough? Or do you need?
It's OK.
I got another one. I got it. Okay, here, pass that one around. But anyway, it's basically, and I'll make this kind of short and sweet because the details are still being worked out. But I, I didn't want to move any farther without the knowledge and the consent of my colleagues to make sure this was something you wanted to do. I felt how important it is for us to maybe have another offering. We have our police and fire academies, and there's Leadership Rutherford, lots of opportunities for citizens. But we have, and we used to do this for the city, have a citizens academy. And I think it provides us with a lot of opportunities for citizens that maybe want to know about how local government functions, can provide that interchange of individuals to kind of learn how to engage local government. There's lots of opportunities that we could create through this. But I wanted to make sure, and like I say, the details and all this will come before you at a later date, but, but since I was asking to have some staff time to help me pull this together as to what actually is being done, and the particular sessions that we're providing. But the idea is basically a seven to eight session meeting. The thought came up in our last discussion, which I thought was another good idea, to have each one of us as council members host one of these sessions. And therefore, you get to kind of welcome folks to the meeting and, and engage them. Each of us get a chance to tell our story for becoming public servants and how we got to this place. And we never know how we're going to inspire or encourage that next city councilman or someone else in our community to get further involved in, in the conduct of the business of our city. So anyway, I think it's a, generally, I think you kind of get the idea of what, what I'm proposing. It's pretty common. The component that kind of encouraged me to proceed with this was a, a part of it having a, in this session, have an opportunity to present a question that we as council might be dealing with as that department is presenting their case, maybe something related to that department. And a lot, small groups basically chew on how, what answers might be possible, and then learn how to respectfully dialogue over those difficult issues that we have to face. So I think there's a lot of win-win-win situations that could provide us with some information. And it just says something right, I think, about how we conduct business here. So anyway, just wanted to get your, if you had questions or concerns, get those addressed before we went any farther with this. And like I say, there is some decisions that have to be made, and I will present those before you as to exactly what we're doing. But my thought is to have this start in October, if we can get this all put together. And staff was very open to moving forward with this, but, but I want to make sure you guys knew, understood what I was proposing and, and that it was something you wanted to do.
That's good. I think it sounds great, Bill.
OK, well, good, thank you. I think that's an amen.
That's, that's an odd.
OK. And one other thing I wanted to present with you, I don't know if any of you heard, but Captain William Lidle was, donated land that started our, our community. And the, I'm not sure when it was, a few days ago anyway, his gravesite was vandalized. And I, what I wanted to ask was that it, just to ask staff if there's something, and I don't know what that is, that we could do to help in that restoration, putting it back together, if there's something that we could do to help them. I'm not proposing anything. I'm just asking that we allow staff to kind of see if there's something that we could do to help them get that cemetery back to, back to wholeness. It's, it was very important to the establishment of our community, and I'd like to see us at least let staff explore what the options might be. I think Raymond has already been out there, didn't you say, Darren?
Yeah, see, he, the fence was, is in disrepair. I asked him to see if there was, again, this would require, I think, councils not, because if we go out there and we do start offering some, some support or aid, there's other.
Ramification.
There were, there's, there's just other graveyards that have, have asked in the past, just we'll make sure that if we do this, that it doesn't, you know, that you understand the, the ripple effect. But looking at maybe helping repair that fence that was done, we don't have any, I confirmed with Raymond, there's no way we could help restore those headstones. But help them put a fence up, we, we could, if, if they do get the restoration done. Also talk about maybe putting a public safety camera out there to kind of, if work is done and stuff is restored, that we could, or, or record or make sure that people know that they can't come right back and do it, or they'll be caught. So there's things like that we can do. And if there's any, if there's any aid that the council deems appropriate, that, that's, that's your decision.
Where's the marker at?
It's behind Haynes Brothers Supply.
OK.
It's, it's a, that's actually where his house wa, existed before it was taken down, but the cemetery, the family cemetery is still there. So, you know, I don't know what would be suggested, but I'd just say, let, let them explore some alternatives and listen to the people that are going to be trying to do this, because this is a historic preservation issue. You're right, I'm not sure what, how much expertise it takes, but they're looking to try to, to restore it. And since it was vandalized, I don't know what even the damage is, but if the city should be welcome to kind of do what we can do anyway. It's OK.
All right, any other business from staff? All right. See you now, we'll stand adjourned.